Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
It's Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, September 21st is now in session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here.
Do we stand for the pledge and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good and gracious Father, you are the source of every good thing and the fount of every blessing. We praise you for your great care that you have for us, your children. As a source of all that is good and true, we ask you to inspire within our hearts a greater longing to pursue these ends and draw us ever closer to yourself. We ask you to send forth your blessing upon all those gathered here. May we receive your guidance and wisdom in accomplishing the tasks set before us. Protect us, keep our county and country safe from all harm, and may we pursue in freedom of heart the things that we, yours now and forever. Amen.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have some changes on the agenda. If you go down to item 6A, the Sheriff Budget Amendment Vote Acquisition, and then we also have the 6B Viper Radio for the Sheriff's Department. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. No, we have, no. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Next is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of September 8th, 2020 Regular Meeting, Tax Releases and Refunds, and Sheriff Kay Donation Budget Amendment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it. Second.
Any second.
This is a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Next is the water increases in tap fees. Al Gerard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
See y'all again. Feel like I was just up here not that long ago, was it? Probably the best way is, I'm gonna read this, because I'm sure that for the record, everybody will be able to know exactly what the narration here. Craven County Water seeks approval to raise water tap fees for the result of having to replace the current water service contractor. As of Thursday, July 30th, 2020, the water service contractor for Craven County Water gave notice that the services provided would no longer be available. Craven County Water saw bids from three other utility services providers and would work to the lowest bidder, and there is a significant increase in charges for installing water taps. I think that compared to the surrounding counties, you'll see that we had a pretty decent or low rate as far as what we charged to put in water taps. And also, a significant number there was we did approximately 100 or so last year. And with the records as it is right now, seems we'll probably do at least that many again this year. And with the previous contractor, we never made money off of it. We tried to make it so we could at least break even, but we never did that because a lot of times, depending on the site that we were doing the tap, sometimes it took a bit longer to do it, sometimes it was a bit harder to find the water line and the size saddle you put on it. But with the contractors that we will be using now, if we keep the tap fees where it is, we'll be losing pretty much $300, $400 every time we do a tap. And again, with the surrounding counties, I think that's, you have that in your?
Yes, we do.
Pardon?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, you can see that we're, for $560 is what we charge for a three-quarter tap. You look at 1700 Jones County, 1500 Pamlico County, we need to go back and review this and maybe come to a pretty good-sized number that reflects the rest of them. I did put on here our current water tap fees and the proposed water tap fees, and that's basically what I'm here to ask for your approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Al, I looked at this, and we are certainly way below our other counties around us. How do we stack up versus the city? Do you have any idea what their numbers look like?
Yeah, you know, I talked with the city, and because they have sewer, they have a whole different structure, and Havelock's the same way.
They're gonna do a package.
Yeah, and they also, they install it themselves.
Yes.
They don't hire a contractor to do it. Havelock, same, listen to this one, Havelock actually says, if you want to put a tap in, you go find a contractor and pay for it yourself.
Really?
And that was, never heard that before.
That's crazy.
I don't like that idea because somebody needs to be inspecting what's going in the ground, so.
Well, that, and doing that, you don't, you could have many different contractors, and some of them may not be?
Exactly, because there's really?
Skilled.
If you're a utility contractor, of course, you have to have a license, but if there's no one from the utility there to do the inspection, again, that tap has to be put in at a certain angle to the pipe and all, you know, somebody needs to be looking at it and say, yes, it's good, let's go.
So these new numbers that you've got, the proposed, you're comfortable that we're going to more than cover, even if there's an unusual situation, we should be okay with these numbers and not lose money?
We still have a tendency in there to, we're not gonna make money. I'm trying to get it where at least we break even, but yeah, we're gonna lose some money on some of these cases. But if you look at it from an other standpoint, if I'm, if I were the engineer designing a subdivision, let's say, and we would apply for a water line extension, then I would not put the taps in during that development because I would let the customer who bought the lot actually pay to have the tap done.
Sure.
Because if I go out there and spend seven, eight hundred dollars, or whatever it's gonna be, to put the tap in, I won't ever get that money back either. But it's like putting in a septic tank system. If you don't have sewer there, the customer, the person who bought the lot's gonna pay for putting in the septic tank. So we're kinda putting a lot of this burden back into the customer side of it, so.
I just, I just want to make sure you're comfortable that we're not making a change that's still not gonna give us, make, keep us whole. In other words, at the end of the year, if we were to look at every, at all the charges versus all the charges that we had to pay, were, are you comfortable that we're gonna be breaking even or making a buck doing that?
I appreciate you bringing that up because, you know, I know that a lot of times you come in and say, well, I'm gonna ask for this hoping I'll get this type thing. But I don't do that. I usually try to get what I need, but these are really, if you want me to go back and redo this, I would like to do that and get to a place where I'm comfortable to say, yeah, we're gonna be all right this year.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Just for, let me jump in just for a second. When I met with Mr. Gerard, we've got an immediate problem, which our fee is not, we're having to subsidize every single one that we do. And the way we got this fee set is that we're gonna win some and we're gonna lose some.
Understand that.
We hope we win more than we lose, but we know there's a chance, and there's a lot of variables, whether you, what side of the road the water service is on, and if you have to go under, we're gonna lose on that one. If it's one where we're going and it's right there, we may win.
Right.
What we wanted to do was get these fees established now, come back this year as we set our fees in the budget process to get you a true fee, but just to true it up now to where we're not subsidizing every single one.
Okay, so what, if I can understand what you said, we're going to go with these numbers, give us six, eight months, whatever that timeframe is, look at all the pluses and minuses, and decide if we're good?
Yes.
And then if we're not, we can redo it again?
Yes, sir. You can adjust your fees every year.
Okay, that's fine. I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Trump?
Yes.
I'd like to say, I think this is a mighty critical time to be going up on anything with the problem the people have been having, with all these unknowns that the people also have. Then they're jumping right up on this price at this time without giving any information that this price is about to go up. This putting a big problem on people, people that don't have their money now. A lot of people out here struggling. We should, we should consider this also.
Mr. Commissioner Sampson, this is not going to affect anybody that already has tap, their tap fees done. This is only on new tap fees, on anybody that's gonna have, build a house and needs to have a tap fee put in. So it's not gonna affect any of the people that already have it.
Well, we know that, but I have a question. If a new homeowner built a house, a property, I myself built a house, I got paid a tap fee out of my pocket.
Yes.
This is only for the contractors. The contractor charged the homeowners, and they can get them out of the bank.
The contractor charges, in the case we have a contractor charging count, unless they, the contractor charges $1,200 to do a three-quarter tap, then the county is paying him $1,200, and as it is right now, the customer will come to the county and pay us $560. So we're losing almost double the money for the time that they put in.
Why you guys want to go up now?
Because we had, the contractor that we had stopped working for us for health reasons. So, and he's probably been here, what, 10?
Twenty, I'd say he's been here 20 years, yep.
And he's wonderful to work with, and we provided the materials for him to help. And again, the contractor we've got now, it's a turnkey job. We know exactly what it's gonna cost each time, unless it's an extenuating circumstances where it's a lot further from the main line or side of it, something related to that. But you're right, everybody who already has a tap now, that will not be, they will not be that.
Somebody wants to build a house now, they've got to be charging that much money.
Basically on new homes is what we're talking about.
Yeah, new homes, they can be charged for.
Right.
Yeah, let me say this too, and if you go back, going back 12 years ago, we had a tap fee where we charged the property owner and we charged the builder. And we dropped that, as I remember, wasn't it, Jack, that we dropped that tap fee?
I'm not aware of that, sir.
Me neither.
I don't think we ever implemented an impact fee.
Yeah.
I don't believe we ever had an impact fee. I, I'd have to go back and research it. That was before my time, so.
Yeah, I think we did. I think we had two tap fees.
No.
And we dropped it, and mainly the reason we dropped it was because of the trailer parks.
Sorry, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I may. How long is this agreement good for, Al, with James Caton Utilities? I mean, is it?
It's an open-ended, I didn't sign anything. He came to, he was the first one to submit me some bids, and I went to six other people trying to get bids from them, and really, really, nobody was interested. I did get TA Lovin', and we got T-Land. Thank goodness, I was able to get at least that many. I contacted some of my previous people I had in Pamlico County. I was surprised that they didn't come in there and want to work. So again, we were in a tight situation, emergency situation, because we had about 25 taps out there that was dropped at our foot because the guys couldn't do it anymore. So we did get them done, we got them done. It just worked out good as far as the customer not having to wait two or three months before we could get this settled and be able to get a tap done.
So there is the possibility going forward, that, you know, I mean, I looked at the comparisons, and they gave a great rate, you know?
Yeah.
But there is the possibility that they may, after they get into it a while and see that, you know, it's gonna cost them more money, and if so, I mean, they can come right on back to the table and that price would, would go up. Is that correct?
Yeah, and if we can come to an agreement with this, and I would like to take that document and make it more whole, to tell you the truth.
Second question, as far as, I know the prior contractor also did our mowing at the sites and so forth. Will that be included? Would they do this, or you're gonna do that separately, or?
I'm gonna have to do that separately because they're not gonna be able to do that too. They're just, for health reasons, they're just not gonna be able to go through with that. But again, I think this is a good time that we do another, maybe find three contractors or more that can do the mowing too. So yeah, we'll revisit that too.
Last question, and I, and I know common sense will tell you this will cost more, but have we, Jack, ever looked at doing a cost analysis of what it would cost to do this in-house?
Yes, sir. We have. Actually, Alan, I talked about that last week, and the initial capital cost outweighs, I mean, it's just, you got a large capital expense for equipment, and then you got manpower, ongoing manpower issues. This is by far the cheapest way to go.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a question. We have, the county's been absorbing the additional cost of our, that resulted from our lower tap fees. Estimate, please, how much did we lose last year alone or over the last few years of costs that we had to absorb that these fees were not addressing?
I did an estimate on that too, and the smallest amount was about $30,000.
What was the biggest amount?
Well, if you went, if you went down detail, and I've got that, I didn't bring it in here because it had customers' names on it.
Right.
As far as how much we paid them last year. Probably 40, around $42,000.
$42,000, so in other words, by absorbing the cost, other taxpayers are subsidizing the cost of the tap fees?
No, we don't, we aren't.
There's no tax dollars anymore, because subsides off the profit from the water system.
From the water system, okay.
Which is money that needs to be reinvested in the system, it's not meant to subsidize.
It comes to somewhere, yeah.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
I mean, somebody, somebody has to pay that.
Yes, ma'am.
A water customer, basically.
So 30,000 to 40,000 over the last few years per year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't mean, are you through?
I'm through, I'm through, I apologize.
No, no, I thought of something after you. I didn't want to interrupt you. If we approve this today, it comes effective immediately, is that correct?
Well, I'm glad you asked that too, because I did some numbers on it, and probably by October 12th, I can have everything arranged as far as posting and get it on social media, get it on internet, get it places where people will know, well, we, until October 12th, you can get by with $560 for a three-quarter, but after October 12th, this is our new.
Commissioner Jones, we wanted to, you know, of course, anybody has an application now, we're gonna honor the current fee schedule, but we thought, to Mr. Sampson's point, a notification period would be appropriate because it is such a change in fees. And then from that point forward, we would pick this new fee up, and I think October 12th was the day we kind of landed on, it's just enough time to get out and do that.
Yep.
It's completely the board's prerogative. I mean, you can set this at any time, you can set it today, or you can set it October 12th, or anything in between.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion and a second?
I have another question. Have the people been in contact that the prices probably will grow up?
No.
No, because, I mean, you can ask that, but they can't be because we don't know who's gonna apply.
That's right.
Everybody's got a license as now, is paying the old, the old price.
The system, yeah.
Nobody has applied for anything new. Once they apply, if they, if they apply before October 12th, they're gonna go under the old system. If they apply after October 12th, it's the new cost. So, Mr. Johnny, they have not been notified because that's, the notification will go out now, good through October 12th, letting, making the whole world know that the tap fees in Craven County are gonna go up starting October 12th. But if you're planning on getting a tap fee anytime sooner, you're working on a piece of property, and you submit your paperwork for a tap fee today, tomorrow, or next week, anytime between now and October 11th, you're gonna pay the old price. After that, you're paying the new price. So we are notifying everybody, but we're not notifying anybody individually because we don't know who's going to apply after October 12th.
That's correct.
I got a question. Why, why have you set a date on October 12th? Why can't it be next year? Give everybody a chance to find what's going on here.
Commissioner McCabe, I'll take that one. So the reason why is because the number Al, Mr. Gerard just told you, the 30,000 to 42,000, is what with the current fee, with the current contractor. That's a much different number with the new contractor moving forward for the next nine months so you can get budget done. So your exposure's gonna be, Al, double that?
Yeah, at least. We figure $100,000 off of a hundred tap.
Double that, maybe even two and a half times that? So it just depends, really, with the commissioners, are you willing to subsidize two and a half times what you're doing now, or do you want to adjust the fee so that it gets pretty much back to a break-even point on each one?
I think the important thing here is, we're not making money on this, but we don't want to lose money either. All right. I have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
No.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
No.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you, Al.
Thank y'all. And we will come back for budget time, and we'll have a comprehensive vote. Sounds good. Thank y'all.
Okay. Next is the Planning Department, Golden Leaf Foundation, Don Boggardner.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
This is dealing with the Golden Leaf Foundation School Generator Grant Engineering Firm selection. We did go out and solicit qualifications from professional engineering firms to perform the engineering services in support of the installation of the generators at five of the Craven County school locations. On August 26th and September the 4th, pre-proposal school tours were held with the five firms that were present. The request for qualifications was due back to the county on September the 9th. We received five qualified proposals and for review, and a bid review committee ranked all of the submitted qualification proposals on September the 10th. Now, at this time, in order to move forward with the implementation of this program, staff requests the Board of Commissioners to select the east group, which was determined to be the most qualified licensed professional engineering firm for this project. Once the firm is selected, staff can move forward with fee negotiation for services. This was a pretty straightforward process. We had a series of questions that we asked each of the firms to respond to. Some of the firms did a good job responding to those, some other ones, they didn't do as well of a job responding to them. And there was a series of 10 points for each of the qualifications. We had five questions, and there was 10 points for each of those categories, and we went through it and ranked them accordingly based on, we had three of us that ended up ranking them, and each, the end result was, is that each of the three proposals that were reviewed by the three, excuse me, each of the five proposals that were reviewed by the three people all came to the same resolution. So at this time, we're asking you to move forward and select the east group as the firm we select to work with to install, excuse me, do the design work for the generator grant project.
Hey, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Being no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Baker, Soil and Water Conservation, and Beavers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. First item is a budget amendment for the Beaver Management Program. These funds need to be re-appropriated from fiscal year 1920 to fiscal year 2021 to fulfill contractual commitments for the county's Beaver Management Program. With this contract ending on September the 30th, payments could not be made until this fiscal year. For this current fiscal year, we have amended the Beaver Management Contract to end on June 30th, 2021, to bring, bringing the contract and our fiscal year in alignment. We're requesting an approval of a budget amendment to reappropriate these Beaver Management Funds.
Okay. Do I have a roll call, do I have a vote?
So moved.
Motion. Second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Being no discussion, can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Next.
All right. Next is a budget amendment for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. As part of Craven County's Emergency Watershed Protection Program, the county is required to pay for legal title opinions and permitting fees associated with each individual property site. Legal and permitting fees total $20,584. Although the county has to pay these fees as part of the program, staff will be able to seek hourly reimbursement for time spent on construction inspection services. We're seeking approval of a budget amendment appropriating funds for legal and permitting fees.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Being no discussion, can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you, Patrick.
Chair, a question. Do you have a, do you ever check at the Beaver Fair Row? Have you ever talked about it?
Have not checked that yet, but I will get with you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we have the Health Department, Scott Harrelson and Clayton Gaskins.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have several items, four items, agenda items this morning, and if the board would like, I could also give a COVID update after these. I have some gentlemen with me this morning, Mr. Clayton Gaskin, who oversees hospice, and Mr. John Stuckey, who oversees environmental health. And I would like to call on them when their agenda items are up. I had the leadoff agenda item that I was prepared to speak to with use of fund balance appropriation. All right. It was an odd year, 2020. We had to shut down our clinics, and we were unable to get our normal Medicaid revenues, but fortunately, there were a good deal of COVID funds that came into the, to the department. And there still continues to be streams of COVID funding. So as a result, for the year 2020, revenues over expenses, we were a little over $1 million. And as customary, each year, I go to county manager, Mr. White, and the finance officer, Mr. Warren, and submit a list of items for consideration, things that we needed, the animal shelter, IT equipment and training expenses for environmental health, clinical supplies and equipment. And all told, the list came up to $64,605. And we would like to request that we, and like Commissioner Liner always says, this isn't county money you're asking for, this is, this is permission to spend the money that you've earned through the year.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a question. I've been seeing that the animal shelter has been advocating for a lot of donations. You know, I mean, it's great, I mean, that folks want to participate and I'm sure not against it. But, you know, it kind of gives perception to some that this Board of Commissioners, that we're not doing our job in, in funding them appropriately. I mean, is there something that, that's, that's just really needed there that they don't have? That this board needs to address or?
Yes, Commissioner Jones, I, I know what you speak of. I think that it is just, those things were items that, that have been put out there that certainly would be good items to have and needed. And we are seeing probably since I've been here, my, my 11 years, the most donations come in from the public and people are out there. And, and I've kind of had that conversation with my folks. Because it was not perpetuated from our staff. It was outside folks just wanting to do a good thing. But I said, you know, I'm pretty sure the commissioners would support you on these things if asked. Because like you said, you haven't even had the opportunity to, to be asked for the items yet. So I, I'm glad you mentioned that. And I, I think it's just supported a community. And I, I think that the last figure I saw was somewhere around $5,000. And, and they're getting some pretty good equipment for pennies on the dollar with, with those. And some of this money we're asking for this morning is to set up the clinical space so that we can have, I believe, three different contract vets come in and do spay and neutering. Because we're finding out that with our voucher program, once people get to voucher, they go out and find these price tags that are just well beyond what they're willing or able to pay. And as a, as a result, a lot of the animals that we adopt out never get spayed or neutered. So if we do it this way and bring in and do the contract, they'll, they'll be that way going out the door.
Okay, thank you. You answered my question.
Yeah, and if there are any people out there that are listening, we will take your donations. We won't throw them away.
Chairman?
Yes. Danny?
Jason, the one thing that where we do need, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, we still have a gap between where we're at, where we need to be to get the facility ready for the vet, to have the vet come in. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so there's still, and we've gotten a nice chunk in, but we still got to get more. We got, we got to get more money or appropriate more money. Because there's quite a bit of equipment and, and the room to do it has to be set up properly, obviously, for surgery. So that's the one area where to get that going, where we do the neutering in-house, we've still, we still need money to do that. And that, two place, I agree, but that's going to have to come from us, I think, ultimately.
I think, Scott, you just, this $30,000 in here does that, correct?
Yes, sir. That's right. This, this money that I'm asking for this morning...
Is going to cover that?
Yes, sir.
Totally.
There will be maybe some lights and some small things that may be out of the other.
It's going to get us to where we can move.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's...
To have it, to have those services come on board sooner rather than later.
Commissioner Liner?
Sir, also, Scott, refresh my mind and everything else. I think when we got our new person on board and everything else, we come to find out the more commitment and the more help we get from the community and the more involvement we get and recognition, it allows her to go out to the bigger companies to get donations and bigger stuff from them because the community is well involved and it shows that. So that helps us out there by getting the community forward, however small it may be. So she's starting to get quite a bit from some big companies.
Yes, sir. Ms. Beeson has written for grants, also donations, local and, and like you said, outside agencies. So great working relationship with Colonial Capital, a lot of rescues, Sheriff's Department. You know, like I said, I'll always be forever grateful to Sheriff Hughes for taking over adult control. And I think with the shelter, food donations, cleaning supply donations, just money donations. It's, it's been great from the public. Much appreciated.
Mr. Chair, for, for members of the public who have not had an animal spayed or neutered recently in this area, your typical spaying and neutering cost is going to run between $250 and $350. And the voucher does not cover that. There is a, and that's a chunk of change for most people out of a monthly budget. There is a low cost spaying and neutering clinic in Greenville where it's about $99 or $100. But there is a six month waiting list on that one, plus an hour drive either way. That's hard on working people. And six months is at least a litter and another pregnancy. So if we want to long term reduce the number of animals who are born here unwanted, the best way is for them to leave the shelter already fixed so that they can't reproduce in the first place. And that is typically the way it's done in other places. We've got an outstanding shelter director now and we're really seeing the difference. I was out there last Tuesday. It's amazing the turnaround.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner? Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
I have two budget amendments this morning. The first one I'll discuss is funds that have been appropriated to hospice in the amount of $181,690 through DHHS, through the Cares Funds. And there's an attachment here of how the intent is to spend this money. I've worked with Craig Warren down here at the Finance Office about what our plans are for this. And this all has to do with the prevention, preparation and response to the coronavirus. We, as a provider, were granted this month, this amount of money. We are able to capture a portion of it as loss revenue, which is, I believe, around $79,000. So what we need, so what, $102,194 is what we're asking to be voted on to bring into our current budget year.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you. The second one, this will do with the physician extender that we hired the end of July. The plan is to, or the request is to have her cover one weekend out of the month for on-call for our patients to supplement what Dr. Fisher is doing. And the plan would be for her to be paid $150 that weekend once a month. So we're requesting to bring that into our current budget year. For this current year, it would be times nine months. And then we would factor that in next year on the new budget.
Okay. Motion?
Medicare does, by the way, Medicare does allow us to use a physician extender for that coverage.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Being no discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Next is the state appropriation for county sheriff's office.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have Mr.?
One more. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just here, recent session law is allowed for a new septic permit. It's done by licensed soil scientists. And as part of that session law, we're allowed to charge a fee. I was just wanting to get that fee established. Be very similar to the engineer option permit fee, or the same actually. And the permitting process is very similar.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I believe we need a roll call vote on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. You care for a COVID update?
Yes.
As of Friday, we had a total of 1,403 cases, active cases, about 257. And we're still at 31 deaths. We did have a spike in our hospitalizations. We usually run less than 10. We were up to 17 as of Friday. In addition to this information, I also met with the Board of Education at their work session and then at their regular public meeting and was able to answer some of their questions. I think that through doing remote the first few weeks, they've been able to gauge what's been going on around us in our state and with other schools that have been doing some in-person learning. And basically what we found out was there's some, some COVID activity. There are some cases, but they're not really being spread amongst the schools. It's not like seasonal flu where it just goes like wildfire through the schools because of the, some of the precautions that are being taken, the mask, the reduced number of children at any given time. So, and also the temporal scans when they, when they walk in to see if anybody's running a fever. So what's happening is these cases are being basically contact traced out of the schools. They're not seeing a lot of spread in the schools that are in session. And one thing on Tuesday at the work session that they asked me about was is there a threshold, a percentage, that is considered safe to go back to school? And at that time, I honestly was not aware of any. Then I went to a, a meeting at the state level and, and got some new information and bought it back. And there are some CDC thresholds. They're, they're very new. But basically, the main things they look at are, well, the one is can the school provide the things they need? The mask, the cleaning, the social distancing. So that's basically, and I think Dr. Doyle and her staff are figuring out ways to do that. Also, a remote option for those that are high risk. The other things, the two main things they look at are what percent of your cases are positive? And right now, we're at about 6% of our, of the people that are tested are positive. So that's considered low moderate. If that's, there's a tipping point between 5 and 6%. 5% and, and above is considered low moderate. Anything under 5% is considered low. The other thing is your transmission rate. And at the time I reported to them, our transmission rate was about 14.4. Anything less than 20 is considered low risk. So I would give Craven County schools a low to moderate risk factor going into this. There are several counties around us that have higher risk factors. They're still not seeing spread through the schools.
One question I have is, I see a lot of this is coming in bunches and coming from nursing homes as far as the numbers that we take in. Are we doing anything with the nursing homes to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Yes, sir. That, that's one thing that we pay particular attention to. Anytime we get any cases reported to us from a nursing home, we send out a communal disease nurse and an environmental health specialist onsite, get eyes on what's going on, talk with the administrators, find out what they're doing. And now they've done it enough that they know what should be done and what shouldn't be done. Even some CDC guidance has changed on that. And if somebody, say a local administrator doesn't want to listen to us, then we have people at the state level that we get involved. And they usually listen to them. But one of the main things is any staff that may be COVID positive, even if they're asymptomatic, at some point, like during a hardship, it was said by the CDC that you could have those people remain on staff and maybe just deal with COVID positive patients. What we've seen in a practical level is that doesn't work very well. So now there's, the state is saying, no, if they're positive, even if they're asymptomatic, you know, send them home. Because it's, it's a variable term, you know? How, what, what do you mean by asymptomatic? Are you not coughing at all? Are you not having a low grade? You know, that's sort of a, a bit of a gray area.
Yeah, the reason I call that attention is because we have, I believe it's 37 deaths we're up to.
Or 31.
31.
Yes, sir.
And a good part of that is due to the nursing homes.
Say about half. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, how about Good Shepherd? What, what kind of report do you have on Good Shepherd?
I do not have any information on Good Shepherd this morning, Mr. Sampson. I'm, I'm sorry. Was there, were there cases there?
Yeah, I know we have probably Good Shepherd, I was just wondering. It is good at this.
I, I can get back to you on that. I'm sorry. I, I don't have any info on that this morning.
Scott, as I've followed the, the deaths, almost every one had an underlying health condition. Is that continuing to be the case that, that of these 31 people, that the majority, vast majority, had other issues that contributed to their death? Is that the way to say it?
Yes, sir. Definitely, underlying conditions. When you look at the deaths, the only ones I know about are Craven County because I get a rundown on each, each death, what the situation was. In Craven County, zero to 24, we've had no deaths, no COVID deaths. Statewide, zero to 17, one death. And then 18 to 24, three deaths. That was as of the end of last week.
Statewide.
Statewide. So we've had none. And our youngest death was 25. So just over the threshold, but there were comorbidities. There were underlying health factors there. And I've seen a lot of late-stage cancer patients. I've seen some hospice patients. I've seen a lot of rest home patients. So that, that is the bulk of our...
Of the 31.
Yes, of our deceased. And then another, another positive for our community is only about 12% of our cases are 65 and older. So that tells me that that population is being very cognizant and, and taking the precautions.
I believe, I'm not sure if you said this or I read it, but where you've said that our total count is, what was the number you gave us at the beginning?
Over 1,000.
Yeah, over 1,000.
Yes, sir.
That it's probably closer to 2,000 to 3,000 in reality. Is that, can you address that?
Yes, sir. A good point. That's one of the points I made at the, at the Board of Education meeting. You know, when you look at the state of North Carolina and you took the number of confirmed cases and the number of confirmed COVID deaths, the deaths were 1.7% of the confirmed cases. But we know, we know that we are not capturing all of the deaths. And nobody will ever know, you know, because there is, it's no, no way to really quantify that. But we know we're not capturing all of them. And I would say that, I wouldn't say that there were a ton of cases floating around out there because we're only at 6% positivity rate, right? And these are the people who are close contacts and symptomatic. So only six, six out of 100 are actually coming back positive. So there's not a whole lot of it floating out there, in my opinion, because of that. If there were, we'd see hospitals being overwhelmed. We'd see a higher positivity rate. Now, what I, what I am pretty sure of is that for every one we know about, there's a one or two out there that we don't know about. Case in point, we've had close contact family members that didn't get tested and confirmed. But they'll tell you, hey, I was already in quarantine. I just stayed home. I got it too. I was symptomatic too.
South Carolina is estimating that for every confirmed COVID case, seven to nine are undiagnosed and unconfirmed. You're saying one to two. What's the basis of those various estimates?
There are, they are, there are large variances, large ranges. I've even seen studies where you would take our confirmed case and multiply it times 38 to get to what would be herd immunity. Yeah. And I think that that, to me, seems a little high because I, I think the positive rate, seven to nine? Yeah, I've heard that quite often. So when I went through the Board of Ed, I said, look, two to three is a very conservative estimate compared to what other people are saying. But that all means that, that fatality rate, that case fatality rate, I am almost certain is less than 1% in the state of North Carolina.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have budget amendment for boat acquisition. Bobby West.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Good morning.
First item for us is we'd like to present a budget amendment for a boat acquisition. We've been very fortunate to be contacted by North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission and were notified of a boat they were surplusing, which would fit our needs. The boat's a 21-foot Parker V-hole. Has a 2014, 300 horsepower, Ebon Rouge E-Tech on the back. It's mounted on it and a boat trailer. We traveled to Raleigh about a week ago to look at the boat, to make sure that it was in good order. And this boat has been operating in Lake Norman area. It's not seen saltwater, very little rust, if any, on the trailer. little rust, if any, on the trailer. Motor, we checked with the service records of it, the motor's in good shape, it's had one fueling jet replaced several years, the other net, boat's in great shape. We're very blessed to be able to purchase this, this boat for $2,500 from state surplus. Normally, on the market, this boat would be, as sits now, would be worth 20-plus thousand dollars. So that coupled with the cost of registering the vehicle, $133, we're totally, we're asking for $2,633 to purchase this boat.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Do I have discussion?
Yes. Mr. West, can you tell me, how many hours on the motor you think?
Mr. I have to check and get back with you on that. I don't know the exact number. They're supposed to be getting me the service records on it. But the people up around the Brunson area that.
If it's fresh water, it should be some good fair condition.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Very good condition. It's, if, like I said, I spoke with a mechanic that worked on last and serviced it last year, as well as the officer who the boat was assigned to, there was no issues with it at all.
Okay, no problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My question is, and we've gone, I've gone through this with the sheriff as far as boat, are we going to be using our present people that are employed to operate this boat?
Yes, sir.
So we're not going out there and getting new people to operate the boat?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll go from what we have existing and for our reserves.
Okay. Okay, do, we have a motion, a second? Have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Viper radios, I believe.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're very pleased to announce on behalf of the hard work of our local representatives in the Coronavirus Relief Act, we've been awarded $275,000 in a grant to purchase Viper radios, Voice Interactivity Plan for Mercy Responder Radios. That's the acronym. We've identified what we need to purchase to fulfill this grant, and it'll greatly enhance our ability to fight virus-related issues as well as communications throughout the county. We'd ask for your acceptance of this, this grant.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Being no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
We need a roll call? Doesn't stay that long. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could, first of all, thank y'all very much. This communication equipment is, is mission critical to us, so I certainly appreciate that. This was also non-matching fund, so it's fully funded, and will save the county and the neighborhood of about $200,000 by us receiving this grant. So I thank y'all.
Thank you. Next is appointments. Pending, current, and upcoming. Appointments be effective immediately on as specified. Pending is Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Craving Aging Planning Board, Craven Pamlico Regional Library Board. Okay. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Regional Aging Advisory Board, and Senior Legislative Tarheel Alternate and Voluntary Agricultural District Advisory Board. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Linda Shagnon seeks reappointment. I would appoint Linda Shagnon as I appointed her originally. Done by acclamation. Coastal Carolina Regional Airport Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that Ms. Kelly Hawkins be appointed.
And Kelly Hawkins, I believe we have a, in here, resume. She has a real estate background and marketing background. I guess we.
Who would she be replacing?
Well, I would ask that, also, I would ask that both be replaced. I think both are nearing their tenure. If you entertained the second one, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll go ahead and put it on.
Yeah, I would appoint Commissioner Liner to that board. So that would be people replacing the two that are on the board now, as they were tabled. Being that we have those two people, that would be appointed by acclamation. Thank you. Fire Tax Commission, Rolf Maris, that's Township Two, Tri-Community, I would reappoint Rolf Maris. The other one is Alton Riggs, seeks reappointment, District Seven. Anybody from District Seven want to? All right, I'll reappoint. Fireman's Relief Fund, Board of Trustees, we have Township Three Dover, seeks reappointment, Robert Stroud.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask to be reappointed, and Mr. Felix Kruen from Township Three.
Okay, reappointed, acclamation. Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, Pat Sager, seeks reappointment, Joan Campbell. I think we really want to reappoint those two people.
Make the motion.
Okay. Motion, reappoint, acclamation. Okay. Upcoming terms expiring, Fire Tax Commissioner Board, Joseph Midget, Township One, Vanceboro Fire Department, Aaron McLawhorn, Township Eight, Fire Relief Fund Board Trustee, Dred Mitchell, Cove City, and Aaron McLawn, Lawnhorn, Cove City. Craven County Aging Planning Board, Carolyn Flyer. That brings us up to our esteemed attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report today.
Okay. That makes, that's what makes him esteemed. And the county manager's report. The one mom county manager.
Yes, sir. We'll give it a shot this morning. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I have two quick items, and they're calendar scheduling things that we need to take care of. As you may know, we've been attempting to schedule a meeting with the Board of Education, a joint meeting between the two boards. They had at their meeting asked for a date later today, which did not work for all the commissioners. I spoke with Superintendent Doyle, and they have had further discussion and would pose the time, the date of September 29th, at 10:00 AM as their first choice and 2:00 PM as their second choice. And I just wanted to confer with the board whether that, either of those times would work for your calendar.
29th, 10:00.
Either 10 or 2.
10 or 2.
10 would be the first choice for them, 2 would be the second.
Both on the same date, the 29th.
Has anybody got a problem with September 29th? You have no problem? Does anybody have a problem with 10:00 AM or 2:00 PM?
Something happened on Tuesday.
Okay, I would suggest 10:00 AM then.
10:00 AM. And I'll work with Dr. Doyle to schedule a location, and the clerk, and we'll need to post a.
Special meeting.
Would that be a special meeting, or may we recess this meeting?
We can recess. That would be the easiest way.
We may have you recess this meeting till September 29th at 10:00 AM.
And I guess it would be better at the Board of Education for as far as using the six-feet rule?
We're going to talk with Dr. Doyle, I may offer a space at the convention center.
That's a good idea. Convention center, yes.
Neutral.
I think we can.
That would be good.
Neither one of us have a, a great sized room.
And we really need to, if we're going to recess, we need to state the location today, otherwise, we can call a special meeting.
Let's just go ahead and call a special meeting, because I have not confirmed the location.
Okay.
Let's just do that.
Okay.
Okay. Got that one resolved. Second one would be, we're at a time in the fiscal year where we need our fall work session at the Board of Commissioners. I spoke with the chairman last week, I wanted to chat with the board to have that session October 19th, which is your, would be one month from today, your regularly scheduled meeting, to have the work session immediately following that meeting. And based on just the, the quick review of the issues that need to be taken under consideration, it may be when it would last several hours. So we try to, it'd be when we'd want to have lunch for, and probably stay into the afternoon.
Okay.
If that was all.
What was the?
Any problem with that?
October 19th, roughly 11:00 AM.
Say, say again, can I measure what we're doing on the 19th?
It's a work session, a typical fall work session that the board has to consider regarding issues for budget.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that, just staying on through?
Yes.
Okay. So let me tell you what this meeting is not. This is not the meeting that we talked about in budget where we were going to come back and revisit some of the budgetary items. October will not be a good enough view on our revenue to come back. That's more than likely going to be a late November, mid-December type meeting, once we see the first quarter with sales tax and are able to get where we are sort of at the six-month mark.
Okay.
And know where you're going forward.
Okay.
All right.
Next is commissioners' reports.
The Board of Education.
Mr. Booker.
Thank you. I just have one item. Last week, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting at the RCS facility. The facility, and if you haven't been there, and that's my first time there, excuse me, in, since the renovations were done. It looks like a completely different place, and the number of people that stepped up and contributed either cash or in-kind service, they've, they've got the names all up on a wall, and it's, it's pretty impressive how many people in our community found that to be a worthwhile place to make a donation. So I, I'm very impressed with the, with the facility. We now have, I believe, four rooms for families, and those rooms are beautiful, they got bunk beds in them, they've got the small kitchenette. It really puts us in a position where somebody who really needs help now has a good place to go for it. They, they've always done a good job there, but they were always struggling with the facility. So it's, it's worthwhile, and it's a great thing that our community has, and it was pointed out that very few communities have, of our size, have something like this. I think it goes back 35 years to when that facility was originally started, and the need obviously hasn't, hasn't gone away. And, and so, if you get a chance to go by and, and visit, they'd love to show you around. So, thank you.
Yeah, the county has made considerable contributions to it, but I, I start. Go ahead.
They asked me to make a, a few comments, and, and they did, in fact, compliment us on our contribution as the county.
I would stress to the people that are listening in to also make donations to the, to help them out. Okay. Commissioner ET.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of comments. Number one, I have officially been sworn in to the Craven County Community College Board of Trustees. Thank you for the board's confidence in me. I'm impressed with the board, I'm impressed with how they work together. I also toured the Volt Center last week, including the new diesel engine repair facility that the, that City of New Bern Public Works has redone for the college at about half the cost of a normal contractor. It is beautiful. I am incredibly impressed with the quality of work that was done, and I think we will see equally good results when the, when Public Works from the city also works on the, the new simulator building for the law enforcement simulator. The, in the first year, we expected about 100 students, they had about 600 students. So the need is very clear. I was impressed with the, the use of the bays, outdoor spacing, there were classes going on at the time, and when I toured the diesel engine facility, there was a representative from Volvo, one of the big car dealerships, who also sits on the board. I think this is going to be a huge benefit to this community to get diesel mechanics up and rolling. The other one is, I sit on the East Carolina Council of Government Boards, and over the last, I will say, four to six weeks, they, the, the board and the new executive director, Katie Bordeaux, are looking to reevaluate what we do well, what we need to do, be doing better, and also what directions we need, or the Council of Government needs to be moving in to improve our support to the local communities. So that is in process. The board outlined some new strategic priorities, and we're waiting for the executive director to come back with a plan of action over how to achieve them. So the Council of Government has struggled over the last few years with the impact of COVID at space and personnel. I think we can look forward to a rebirth in terms of capability and mission. So I'm waiting to see what happens with that, but I'm looking forward to seeing what they do. That's all, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Liner.
Sir, I only got, I only have one thing. The last meeting, I talked about the census. I've got to talk about it again. Since that meeting, I thought we were going to be losing tens of millions of dollars. It's now up to a hundreds of millions of dollars for this county alone. The state is on track, if we're going the way we're going right now, if people not filling out the, the census forms, the state is on track to lose over a billion dollars in federal aid. That is not chump change, people. Hundreds of million dollars for this county in federal aid that we're getting for our programs now. If we lose that, there's going to be a lot of people that's going to be in serious trouble and jeopardy. This is all confidential, it doesn't come back on you. If you're living in this county, you need to fill out a census form. You must, you have to fill out a census form. If you're getting any support or assistance, or even if you're not, you need to fill that out. It's money in the call for this county to take care of the people of this county, and the possibility of this state getting another local official. So more important is providing the services that we need to continue to provide to our people. We must get these forms filled out and sent in. Next week is the last week, that's it. That's, that's the deadline, the end of September, so please take it serious. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Liner, are the Census Bureau calling those people that haven't mailed their forms?
They're supposed to be on the ground knocking. There's some, I've seen some out on the ground knocking, but what I'm being told, people are not answering the door, or they're not home. One of the two, you know? And if you, it's easy, you can go online and fill it out. Like I say, it's all confidential, it can't come back on you. You can get to the post office, I think they still got the forms and everything in there that you can fill it out, or you've got people coming to the door, or could be calling you, or you can call them. But we just need to get, get it out.
Yeah. I, I think if we stress in some of our communities, the commissioners, to have these people get these forms out, it'd be good. Thank you, Commissioner Liner. Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, I just have one thing. Last Wednesday, I did have opportunity to be with the principal from Tucker Creek, and also with one of the teachers there.
and also with one of the teachers there, Ann Frazier. They had a donation ribbon-cutting at the council facility in New Bern here. They already had about 15 students from the Tucker Creek School, where they donated a check for $500 to the council. And I thought that was a great thing for them kids to get together and raise their kind of money to get to the council society. That's all I have.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, sir. Concerning the census, I remember when the first, again, and, or I sit down, but can't imagine, we did our best to try to get people on board to begin to fill out the census, because the census is very important to us, and it's going to bring a lot of money in Craven County and other, also other communities, because it's really needed. But I did have a young white lady come by, come by my house last week, helping, trying to get people to help fill out the census, such that, I know some people are not opening the door, but we all, all we open our door, even though we already has been, already got them marked in, you know, about the census. We know how important it really is. And let's encourage everyone, even the, can't imagine, and I had a, talked to some peoples, part of some people to go out, one group, go out and try and get people to sign these, go and put in for these census. And maybe we might need to get back up with them and see how they're coming along, because it's very important. We need these funds, no doubt about it. Another thing I'd like to say, I'm glad to see this diesel program come into Craven County. I know it's been in Pamlico County, I know about 30 years, because I went through that program, and I tried, I tried my best to get the community college to get involved in the diesel engine and other trades. And had no, I had no, no success in trying to get them to do this until Craven County began to, began these other programs. And we also, New Bern also gave us a hard time in trying to get these programs started. So finally, as we began to start it on our own, then they, so the New Bern decided they would come in, working on vehicles, where we threatened, and we would go out, bring somebody in from New York, teach some of these courses. So, but they took it over. Now I'm so glad they're doing something. But I'm not glad they're leaving Craven County out, that we was in the forefront of doing these things. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jones?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I would suggest, county manager, that, you know, we haven't had any meetings with Highway Seventy, and Highway Seventeen and Sixty-four has been few too, except for a virtual that's coming up, Zoom. It might be a good idea to have Preston Hunter in for the Transportation Board and let us know what's going on. And good news is that our general, who was on that board, is being, coming back. But I think it'd be a good idea if we found out where we stand, because a lot of activity is being postponed. And I think most of their transportation department is working on repair of roads and cutting grass and so forth. So it'd be a good idea to get some objectives. Other than that, are we going to recess to a special meeting or just have a special meeting?
Just adjourned.
Okay. So we have a special meeting on the 29th at 10:00 a.m. I'd ask for an adjournment?
No move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.